Welcome, everyone. This is the school board meeting of Bloomington Public Schools, Monday, December 10th, 2018, 7:00 PM. All members are present. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi. The Pledge of Allegiance says that we are in our nice state of America and it says with the Republic of America stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move to him.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a for recognition of public this evening. The school district is fortunate to have businesses, organizations, faith communities, and individuals who partner with us to provide educational opportunities and support our learners and the Bloomington community. In appreciation of these collaborative efforts, the school board recognizes our friend of education. So I'm going to now invite Kelly McGowan to come forward. She is from Metro South Adult Basic Education Director, and she's going to introduce our friend this evening.
Thank you. It is my honor to introduce Tom Reese, Workforce Development Specialist from Career Force Bloomington, which is formerly known as the South Hennepin Workforce Center. Career Force Bloomington, under the leadership of Mr. Reese, has truly become a valued Metro South partner. Federal demographers have determined that there will be a labor shortage for at least the next 10 years. Both of our programs are required by federal law to follow the regulations under WIOA, which is the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. In order to address the labor shortage, this requires the collaboration of core partners, of which Metro South and Career Force are included. And because of the federal mandate, we have developed a much stronger partnership over the past two years. More specifically, we have worked together to formulate a strategy to bring more awareness of each other's services to adult students, Career Force clients, and the broader community and employers. Together, we have developed a yearly action plan that indicates how we will partner together to maximize services and referrals for students and clients. And some of the activities that we have partnered on include having the ABE Career Navigators and Career Force reps table and present at each other's sites during high-traffic times. We have coordinated career and resource fairs and have joined together to facilitate ABE student field trips to Career Force Bloomington. The evolution of this partnership has also led to the development of the Healthcare Advisory Council. And this consists of ABE, the Career Force Center, and several healthcare employers from the local community. We meet quarterly to discuss how our roles can help to solve the shortage of qualified workers in healthcare. And this in turn informs how we teach our healthcare career pathways classes at Metro South. Tom and his staff have been instrumental in connecting us to key employers, creating more opportunities for us to partner, and providing a warm welcome to our students and employment navigators. Tom is a practical, compassionate person who understands that we can only be stronger by working together. We look forward to many more years of collaboration. And we'd like to truly thank Tom and his staff at Career Force. Thank you, Tom.
Wow. How's that?
Good.
All right. First of all, I want to thank the board for this opportunity on behalf of the state of Minnesota and Career Force. Thank you, Kelly, for those kind words. And to the rest of you that are listening to this presentation, brief presentation, I'd like to say that our partnership together is about connecting individuals with opportunities in the community. Working with students and with employers, it's about making those connections around workforce development. So when students and employers can work together and create an opportunity for some synergy and workforce development, it only improves our community. So on behalf of the Career Force Center and the staff there, once again, I'd just like to say thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe we have a student with us tonight, so I have a statement I need to read. Requirement of our 12th grade government classes is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, et cetera. The social studies curriculum guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. So now, I would like you to come to the podium, introduce yourself, your school, and your teacher.
Hello. My name is Ellie Murnan. I'm a 12th grader at Jefferson High School. I'm in U.S. Government right now for Mr. Strolline.
Thank you. So at the close of the session, or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you can ask for a signature on the agenda, and you can ask the people over on this side, the cabinet will, someone over there will sign it for you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda? Moving on to Part A, is there someone that'd like to move Part A, please? Second. All in favor of part A, of approving Part A, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Part B, the first item is reserve teacher wage increase. Mary Burrows is coming up for that.
Madam Chair, be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 authorizes the full day beginning wage rate for reserve teachers to be $135 per day for the first 40 days, and to be $140 per day after 40 accumulated workdays, and $145 per day for Bloomington school retirees effective December 17th, 2018. In addition, a $15 incentive will be added to reserve teachers who work on Fridays.
Second.
Go ahead.
Chair Stegoff, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. Occasionally, I do come forward and review our reserve teacher rates. I think I've come before the board a couple of times since I've been here. And so at this time, we're requesting that we raise our reserve teacher rate by $3 a day, due to comparisons in other districts and information that we've been receiving. So that's the background of why I'm here.
Thank you. Any questions?
So I know that statewide, or metro-wide even, there's a sub shortage. Is it pretty substantial here in Bloomington? Are we having a hard time filling subs where classrooms are not getting them, or how bad is it?
I would say we have increasing difficulty filling. I think that's across the metro. There are fewer graduates coming out of education classes. I think everybody's aware of that, that not as many graduates are entering the career of teaching. And we also have a lot of exits out of teaching within their first five years. If you look at the stats, that's going up. So a lot of the people who would normally be subbing are going into contract positions that are opening. We've had several of our subs go into contracts this year, either for our school or for other schools. So that's causing a little bit of a concern across the metro.
Okay, well, because I'm asking, because I'm wondering if a $3 increase, is that going to affect that at all? Is it going to make where more people come here? Or should we be looking at a higher increase besides just $3?
$3 actually puts us above the mean by a dollar. So, you know, we're above, you know, the median. Minneapolis pays more, but they have a more challenge, you know, I would say a different makeup than we do. But if you look at the surrounding districts and touching districts, we're competitive.
Okay. And the $15 on Fridays is probably a good idea, because that's always a day when teachers are gone.
That is the hardest day that we have to fill right now. Yep, if you look at our stats.
Okay. All right.
Anybody else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. The next item is resolution stating the intention of the school board to issue general obligation bonds 2019A to finance alternative facilities projects. And Rod Zikovich is here? Sorry. Go ahead.
It resolves the School Board of Independent School District 271 state of Minnesota as follows. The School Board hereby finds and declares it is necessary and expedient for Independent School District 271, the district, to issue its fully registered general obligation alternative facility bonds, the bonds, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 123B, Point 59, Subdivision 3, and Chapter 475 as amended, to fund a portion of the costs of the following projects as included in its 10-year facility plan approved by the School Board and the Commissioner of Education and related financing costs. Miscellaneous deferred maintenance projects at various district facilities as included in the district's approved 10-year facility plan. The bonds would be issued in the total aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $25,300,000. The district will conform to all aspects of the attached extractive meetings minutes and Exhibit A.
Second.
Chair Stegoff, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, this is a process that we started back in 2012, when the board put a plan in place for us to do deferred maintenance projects at $15 million a year at each of our sites. What we've been doing is we've been bonding every two years for two years' worth of projects. Part of that gets, part of the bonding process, the other part is, as will be part of, another part of this board meeting, of pay-as-you-go levy portion that will pay for some of these projects. The, our Elers and Associates is our financial consultant on this. They will be back to the board on the 25th of January for a sale, a report, and then the plan is to look at selling the bonds sometime in February.
Questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to the next one, committed funds. Would someone like to read that one?
Madam Chair. It resolves, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves committed funds in the area specified as follows. Committed funds, 1, $140,965 for wellness dollars; 2, $110,702 for band, uniform, and instrument replacement; 3, $825,437 for athletics and activities; 4, $176,776 for staff development; 5, $764,885 for site department carryover funds.
Second.
This is a category that we're required to do before the audit is finalized. In June, we provided the categories to the board. The board, now with the audit complete, we have the dollar amounts in these areas. You'll notice these areas have shortened up quite a bit. Part of it is due to the transportation, as the board made a change in our reporting, that we were reporting both transportation and general fund together. So we just rolled that into the overall budget. The second piece was, we were putting dollars aside for a prior referendum. Those dollars have now been spent over time through the process of the audit of the spend down of the fund balance.
Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next item is operating transfers, community service, and internal service funds. Would someone like to read that?
Madam Chair, be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the operating transfers of $305,097 from the general fund to certain programs in the community services funds for fiscal 2017-2018.
Second.
This is another resolution that is done for the audit every year. There are dollars that are general fund, funding sources that are being moved into the community education area. And mainly what these are for is the operating costs of both Pond and Southwood Buildings.
Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next item is operating transfers, community service, and internal service funds. Would someone like to read that?
Madam Chair, be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the operating transfers of $305,097 from the general fund to certain programs in the community services funds for fiscal 2017-2018.
Second.
This is another resolution that is done for the audit every year. There are dollars that are general fund, funding sources that are being moved into the community education area. And mainly what these are for is the operating costs of both Pond and Southwood Buildings.
Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next item we have is acceptance of the audit report, 2017-2018. Do you want to introduce your guests?
Yes, I have with me Matt Mayer from Bergen KDV. He's been on our audit for a long time.
About 20 years.
And he'll be here tonight to do a PowerPoint presentation and answer any questions the board would have on the 2017-18 audit.
All right, thank you. Would someone like to read this resolution?
Madam Chair, be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the auditors' reports from Bergen KDV Limited, which includes audited financial statements, audited financial statements of the student activity accounts, and accompanying communication letters for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018.
Second. Thank you.
All right. Madam Chair, Superintendent, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to present the results of the 2018 audit tonight. You received about five documents in your materials. I'm going to summarize those in a PowerPoint for you, so we can just follow along on the screen. If my presentation doesn't cover any questions you have, feel free to jump in along the way, or save them for the end. As you're aware, the district has a responsibility, it's here to prepare financial statements for the public, to show the results of operations for the district, as well as the district's financial health. That presentation needs to be audited, and the state requires that, and you have hired our firm for the 2018 fiscal year to provide that opinion. Our opinion on the financial statements is unmodified or a clean opinion, which is the best we can give you. And it means that the numbers we're going to be looking at tonight are a true and accurate picture of the district's results of operations and financial position at the end of the 17-18 school year. We also did some compliance testing. We are required by the feds to do, on a rotating basis, some work on your grants that you receive from them. This year, we tested the Title I program and had no issues with that. The Office of the State Auditor also requires us to test the district on various statutes that apply to running a school district here in Minnesota, conflicts of interest, contracting and bidding, that type of thing, and happy to report no findings there. And probably most importantly of all, this year, we're not having any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control. And that's been a standing report for the last several years at the district. It's a compliment to the team in your finance department for the structure that they have here and the way that they're executing on it. Internal control is basically the policies and procedures you have in place to make sure that you get good, accurate numbers at the end of the year, and you're safeguarding the district's assets. And it's clear to us that your finance team is doing a good job on that, and I also want to thank them for all their work in preparing for the audit. It's not a normal day in the office for them when we come to do the audit for a couple of weeks, and they were very helpful throughout the entire process, and it's very clear they share the same goal that we have and you have, and that's accurate financial reporting at the end of the year. I'd like to take maybe five minutes or so, just to provide you an overview from my perspective on the results of operations for the year. I know your team does a good job of that, but sometimes it's of value to get an outsider's look at how the year went for you. And also, I provide some historical perspective that might give you some trends that you might not get on a typical basis. I like to look at the performance of the year in the context of the budget. In the government sector, the governing body establishes a budget, basically authorizes spending, and projects revenue, and establishes a level of financial health that's acceptable to them at the end of each fiscal year. And if you look at the original budget in the first column, or the final budget in the second column here, the bottom line indicates that you, as a board, authorized a spend-down of fund balance. It was not necessarily a balanced budget for the year. Expenditures exceeded revenue, but that was planned. And as board members, you authorized use of fund balance. We'd anticipate that the fund balance would go down based on the final budget for the year of about $4.8 million use of fund balance. If we look at the actual results, the district actually performed better than that, by about $1.2 million. Revenue was actually better than anticipated by about $4 million. General education revenue from the state, along with special education revenue from the state, totaled about $3 million better than budget. And then the federal dollars, both on the title side and on the federal special education side, were better than anticipated as well. Spending for the year was also a little bit over budget, about 1.5%, 2%, and most of that had to do with special education. Special education was about $3.5 million over budget. It's a very challenging line item to budget from administrative standpoint. It's really demographically driven each year, and until the students are in-house, it's very difficult to tell what their needs are going to be and where you're going to land on that number. Now, portions of that are offset by a revenue stream, but not all of that is going to be absorbed by the state and federal. And as a result, you're going to see a little bit of a disparity between the actual overages on revenue and the amount that you had on the spending side there. The structure here at the state is, on the funding, is driven based on your enrollment. And your enrollment has been increasing steadily each of the last several years, whether we look at it from a residence standpoint here, or the actual number of students that you've served here. But it hasn't been exactly strong growth. It's been about 1% or a fraction of 1% each of the last three years or so. And that really drives where your revenue is going to end up. With the state giving you about 2% revenue increases each year on the general education side, you're going to get that 2% if you maintain your enrollment, and that's basically what you've been able to do over the course of the last five years or so. That's a positive trend. You can see that revenue has increased each of the last several years, and revenue from 2017 to 2018 was actually up about 3.9%. The main factor there was the state revenue, which represents the 2% additional general education dollars. Some state special education was in there as well. And also, the local property tax levy was about $2.5 million more in '18 than '17, at least the amount that was dedicated to the general fund. If we look at spending, as I mentioned, revenue was up about 3.9%. After three years of really flat spending, we really didn't have any increases at all from '15 to '16 to '17, right around $141,000, $142,000 each of those three years. The board did authorize an increase in spending this year, and spending was up about 7% over the prior year. The main line item, though, was in that instructional category. About $5 million of that growth was right in instruction, and a great portion of that was in state special education, was in special education spending. About half of it was special ed, about half of it was regular ed. But special ed is only about half of your regular instructional costs here. So by having that increase of about $2.5, $3 million each category, you can see that the rate of special education spending is increasing at almost twice the level that your regular instructional categories are spending right now. And that poses some challenges, because the funding is not going to be at 100% when it comes to that special education expenditures. The good news is that about 68% of the dollars are getting to the classroom, and you can see the other categories of administration and support being a fraction of the overall spending in the general fund.
I'm just going to jump in for just a second, just so there's, when we talk about general fund from a budgeting perspective, district transportation and general operations, when the general fund is talked about in an audit, we're also including in that our operating capital and also the capital projects levy. So some of the increase in the revenue from the levy this last, for 17-18, was due to the increase in the capital projects levy based on the market value of homes went up. That levy is based on a market value percentage.
Thanks, Rod. This chart puts it all together, and it's very busy, and I apologize for that, and it's also very small type. But basically, what we're talking about on the top of the chart is that fund balance went from about $29 million at the beginning of the year to about $25.4 million at the end of the year. And that $25.4 million is broken into various components. Some of those you approved just prior to my presentation here, those are the committed fund balances that you, as a board, have set aside for specific purposes here at the district moving forward. There are also mandated set-asides from the state related to operating capital and other capital-related activity. What's left over is that unassigned amount, the second line from the bottom, and that number went from about $6.7 million at the beginning of the year to $10 million at year end. But the main reason for the increase was the fact that you absorbed that transportation amount, as Rod talked about earlier, into that unassigned amount. We're not making a distinction between transportation and unassigned any longer. And really, that increase is solely based on the fact that you've incorporated the transportation into that number going forward. If that hadn't occurred, actually, the unassigned fund balance would have dropped about $1 million from 2017 to 2018. Now, that's the number that you, as a board, have established as the barometer for financial health. Your fund balance policy says that you want that number to be between 5% and 8% of annual spending. And if you do the math on that $10 million unassigned number, it comes out to 6.7% for the 2018 school year. So you're right in the middle of that spread that you've offered for yourself, that 5% to 8%. So from a financial health standpoint, I would say that you're exactly where you want to be. And again, want to quell any fears about that spend-down, that budget that you had earlier, the spend-down that you authorize as a board, still puts you at the end of the year, right within the financial health parameters that you've established for yourself. Now, that being said, I do want to talk about the history of fund balance here, and the state looks at it a little bit different. So the percentage is going to be off a little bit. They only look at your unrestricted spending and don't worry about the restricted dollars that they send you. But you're the green bar here, and the state average for fund balance across the state is about 21%. And that number's been relatively steady each of the last five years. If we go back four years to 2014, your financial health was actually exceeding the state averages of about 25% at that time. And you can see each of the last several years, there's been a spend-down of that amount. In 2015, you fell below that state average. And here again, in 2018, based on the state calculation, you're at about a 10% unrestricted fund balance. So I'm wanting to provide you some perspective on where you stand, where you've been, where you currently are. I would encourage you to look at your internal fund balance policies, the benchmark that you want to use. But to give you some perspective, we provide this number anyway.
Matt, when it says "all schools excluding charter schools," is there a reason for excluding the charter schools?
Charter schools don't have the stability that a typical school district has with the tax revenue stream and the like, so they typically have a larger fund balance, and that would skew the fund balance up further. A typical charter school has about a 25% fund balance, so if we included them, that would increase that state average up. So I want to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, and by excluding them, we have a true 21%. So you can compare yourself to Minnetoka, to Farmington, your neighbors, and you know that you're even lying with that. But that, again, being said, is just to provide some perspective, and again, your internal policy is going to dictate what you, as a board, feel is a reasonable level of financial health.
Okay, but in any arguing situation for discussion purposes, are charter schools having a much higher surplus, or something like that, is that the cause for concern that the legislature has brought up periodically?
Expand on that a little bit.
Yeah, you know, in the past, there's always been sort of this competition between charter school funding and public school funding. So some of them get, receive maybe some benefits or something that the public schools don't see. And so then, that all causes all kinds of discussion and curiosity about why, if their charter school is a public school, why are they treated differently than public schools in financing?
Yep. I think you're digging a little bit deeper than I was actually going to on this chart. My only purpose on this chart was to pull that number out, so you could get that apples to apples. I'd be happy to talk the policy piece of it with you.
No, and that's okay. That's a question for the legislature, too, as they go in, and the Department of Education.
I also would add that in a presentation later tonight, when we do the revised budget, we'll be talking about where the actual fund balance is for, you'll see for both 17-18, where it ended based on what we say is transportation and general operations budget, and where we're looking at for 18-19.
Just a real quick question, when you're talking about the state average of being about 20%, do you have any idea what the metro average is? Is it about 20, or is it lower?
It's a little bit lower than that. I don't have that number off the top.
where it ended based on what we say is transportation and general operations budget and where we're looking at for '18, '19.
Just a real quick question. When you're talking about the state average of being about 20%, do you have any idea what the metro average is? Is it about 20% or is it lower?
It's a little bit lower than that. I don't have that number off the top of my head. But typically, the greater Minnesota districts skew that number higher. Typical district here in the metro area has a very similar policy to yours, somewhere between high single digits and low double digits. So it's probably going to end up in that range from the metro standpoint. Again, the internal set asides aren't counted. So that committed amount that you had earlier, that's in that number. And depending on what a typical district might do for their committed or initial set asides, it could skew that number as well. But I would say that it's safe to assume that a metro district would be lower than that 21% number.
Probably higher than our 10%.
Yes.
Okay.
And looking at too, is remembering with committed funds, committed funds are funds that we have told either sites or departments or groups that we would hold those dollars aside rather than be part of the general operations.
Quick look at your long-term debt. This is your bonded indebtedness. And also, the severance benefits that you've committed to is basically flat for the year. You paid off about $8 million of bonds during the year, but there was also an accounting change this year that drove up the severance liability on the health insurance commitment to retirees here. So basically, in the end, not a lot of change on the long-term debt outstanding at the district for 2018. I know you're going to hear a lot about tax levies in a little bit, so I'm going to let that, those charts go. And wrap things up tonight by taking a look at your two other operating funds. One is the food service fund. We isolated all of the dollars associated with food service and the activities, whether it be the breakfast program, the lunch program, the after-school program into one fund. After several years of surpluses, it did have a deficit this year of about $160,000 or so. You still have a very healthy fund balance in this fund of almost $1 million to end the year, and that's almost a 20% fund balance. So no real concerns in this particular fund, although we are seeing a little bit of a decline in the actual meals served in this fund year over year. And then finally, the community service fund. And this is all of the community education programs, ECFE programs, the school readiness programs. All of them get put into this particular fund. This fund has had surpluses each of the last three years, has a very strong fund balance at the end of 2018 of almost $5.5 million, which is approaching almost 50% fund balance. This fund, again, is made up of all those individual components. And so you really need to look at those individual components as far as the financial health goes. But each of them, whether it be ECFE, school readiness, community education, had positive fund balances at the end of 2018. And that indicates to us that the inflows for each of those programs are adequate to cover the cost of operations in each of those funds for 2018. So I will leave it at that. If there's a question that you had regarding the results of the audit or the district's financial performance, be happy to respond to those.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you very much for being here. Okay. Move on to 2018, 2019 budget, mid-year budget adjustments. Someone like to read that one?
Madam Chair. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves adjusting the 2018, 2019 budget for all funds by increasing revenues by $2,195,294 and increasing expenditures by $1,651,506.
Second.
As you kind of see tonight, we're talking about three consecutive years, all in one night's worth of presentations. We just talked about '17, '18. We're talking about '18, '19 here in the budget. And then, we'll be talking about approval of the levy, which is for the 19, '20 school year. So if you look at our '18, '19 budget update, this presentation is to inform the board on making a decision to update the budget. We will look for board's approval of this update tonight. The timeline, we look at things such as the audit, which was just approved. Any updates in enrollment since October 1? We wait for October 1 results for enrollment. And then, if there's anything changed in legislation, or we find a grant, or there's different other items that come in, we update the budget for those different items. Again, any prior year carryovers, any project that was planned for the prior year that didn't get done, all those different items that are updated in these budgets. As we've talked many times, we have our funds, our capital and deferred maintenance, which is our operating capital, all facilities, construction, and capital project levy, which is our technology and security, our debt service, which is our bonds and the interest on those bonds, our insurance and internal services, self-insured dental, medical, our trust for our long-term other post-employment benefits, and then our main three operating funds of food service, community ed, and general fund and transportation. So if we start out with operating capital, from the audit, we ended up spending down $1.2 million in fund balance this last year for an ending fund balance of 7 point, just under $7.4 million. We see an adjustment of $740,000 between what the proposed budget was or approved budget back in June versus now. And mainly, what that was is there is a recording that we need to allocate health and safety from the all-facility budget into the capital budget. So it's just a shift of those expenditures within those funds. Go, all facilities. We showed a spend down of 13 point, just under $14 million. Again, as we mentioned earlier tonight, when with the bonds, we sell bonds, we build up a fund balance, and then over two-year period of time, we spend down those funds, and then we bond again. And so it's kind of a recurring process. This is kind of a flow-through, in a sense, is whatever revenue comes in, we spend on projects. So it's not a building a fund balance, or there's different changes in that. It's basically, here's the revenue we're getting. If there's any benefit, there's some interest with that, those dollars. But when you're doing projects within a two-year period of time, you're not getting that much interest over that period of time. So if you look at it, overall, there was some carryover of some projects between the two years. We got done with a little more in the first year, second year coming through. So it's showing that we having a spend down of nine point, just under $9.7 million, or the end of the fund balance with that. And again, as mentioned before, $743,000 was moved from this fund to the operating Capital projects levy, which is our technology and security, we showed pretty much a break even for audit. What we're showing is some projects that we were planning on getting done in '17, '18 are carried over to, you know, a lot of these projects, we start, and they start at the beginning of summer, and a lot of times, they don't get done, and it kind of rolls over into the next year. And that's why you'll see with capital projects levy, all facilities, operating capital, you'll see a lot of times the fluctuations between years just by when projects get done between the two-year period of time. Moving forward, it's showing that no change in revenue and expenditures, an increase of $500,000. So showing a spend down of about $379,000 this next year for ending fund balance of just over $4 million or just under $4 million. Debt service, no change in debt service. We ended up slight spend down of $667,000. That was planned in the sense of that we used some of the interest and some of the fund balance that we had there to pay the interest on the first part of a bond that was coming up. So we kind of paid that through the interest of the fund balance. If the, for board's information, again, the state requires us to levy for 105% of what our debt interest and principal is on an annual basis. And then, they come back and, as you'll see in the levy presentation, they come back and take it back over time. So it's kind of a revolving thing. Instead of them taking it back, there's times we can, from a financial perspective that Allers recommends us to do, is we use it to pay a payment upfront. So we don't end up just kind of passing it back and forth between levies between years. Our dental showed a slight improvement of about $71,000. We're showing a spend down of, or the proposed was a spend down of 129. We're showing revenue being a little higher participation within the fund. So we show an increase in revenue of $57,000. So the new projected revised budget is a spend down of just over, just under $73,000. This is a fund that we've, we've kind of, over the last few years, proposed that it's going to be a spend down in funds. And it's been one that has just pretty much been stable over probably the last five or six years, or more than that, probably the last eight years. The board has not proposed an increase, I believe, in the last six years to premiums on dental. Health insurance, another good year in health insurance. We've, we've, we switched over in 2009 to a self-insurance plan. A lot of districts, when they switch over, they have to have big increases the first couple of years. We have not had to do that. Going into last year and this year, there was a 3% increase that was approved for premium increases. As you can see, we're still in, to be in a second year of only a 3% increase each year, showing that we're still showing a positive revenue over expenditures. It's showing that this fund is in good shape. The insurance committee's work and everything else on this has really developed a program that is solid to be able to help both employees and the district maintain their insurance Our other post-employment trust, back in 2009, the board sold bonds to be able to cover future debt that the district would have to pay out for retirees. As you can see, we have a spend down of about $817,000 this year. It's going to be pretty much a consistent, that over the year with the projection from our actuaries, is that's what the spend down of about, we spend about $1 million. Revenues from interest are about $150,000. So next year, the plan is about an $850,000 spend down with that. And one of the unique things of our district is that we have in the bank enough to be able to pay for these other post-employment costs going out into the future, that we don't have to tap the general fund for those costs going forward. Very few districts have that ability. This is the debt on those same bonds that we sold back in 2009. Again, slight spend down in the fund balance there, showing going forward, nothing really changed from the proposed budget. You can see the difference in expenditures. One of the big things is, if you remember, the board refinanced those bonds, I believe, a year and a half ago. And you can kind of see with that, you're seeing about a $200,000 a year savings with that refinancing. Our internal service fund, this is a fund that oversees vacation payouts, any other severance that's not covered by the other post-employment. It's also there is, the state has been talking about different increases in both PRA and TARA. And we just want to make sure that we have protection for a year or two that we don't get hit all of a sudden that we have. We have at least some cushion here with this fund to be able to offset any increases, to give us a chance to make an adjust, budget adjustment without being pressured into making a huge cut right away. Food service, no real change in the budget. As Matt mentioned, we have a spend down of $173,000 this year. The proposed budget and revised budget is showing a spend down of about $161,000. Community services fund, as Matt mentioned, we had about a $702,000. And a lot of the gain in this fund has been in with the Kids Safari, Early Learners Academy. Have been kind of the main two that have been driving additional revenues in that area. As you can kind of see, the projection is a spend down within this area. We were planning flat, some of the carryover of some projects and the rest. It's showing a spend down of about $91,000 this next year. Then finally, the general fund. The general fund came in at a spend down of just under $2.3 million for an ending fund balance of $10 million. This is where our fund balance policy is, our 5%. So if you take a 5% on the $140 million, you're talking just under $7 million with the, or red at $7 million for our total fund balance. So we're about $3 million over, and it's showing at about a 7.2%. The proposed was dropping it down to a 6.4. And the revised budget is showing a $6 million, or 6% fund balance. So it's really technically, we're looking at, we have about $1.5 to $1.6 million of cushion above the policy of the 5%. As was mentioned to the board in last June, when we did the original budget, this was planned. We showed that we also are looking at a need for adjustments of $2 million, $1 million to $2 million next year, and then a larger out into the future. But showing in the current year, what we're looking at for this next budget is we're balanced, and we're within that eight to, or five to eight percent goal. So we're looking for board approval of the updated budget for tonight. I'll take any questions.
Questions?
I have one. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. When you talk about spend down, that means that that is funds that we're spending out of the fund balance?
Correct.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Okay. The next item, final 2018 payable, 2019 property tax levy, public comment.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the proposed final property tax levy for the 2018 payable 2019 levy of $59,405,697. Be further resolved that in the event of any changes to levy amounts by the Minnesota Department of Education, it is the intent of the School Board of Independent School District 271 to levy the appropriate amount as allowed by law.
Second. Second.
So this is kind of the first piece of the start of the 1920 budget. We provided to the board back in September, a first look at this. This is to finalize that. So again, tonight is to inform the board on making decision on the final levy. We'll need board approval. Part of the process is to do a truth and taxation process. At that end of the truth and taxation process, it's, turn it back over to the board chair to see if anybody in the audience has any questions. And then, the board has the opportunity to approve the final levy. So the process overall is in September 7th, we got our first information from the MDE. On the 24th, the board did a preliminary levy. We submitted that by September 30th. The state then, or the counties then, provided taxes to The state then, or the counties then provided taxes to the voters in November. And then on December tenth, tonight, we have the final submissions. So the two parts of the truth and taxation requirement is, we need to do a current year school year budget with sources and revenue, of revenue and expenditures by program, and then a proposed property tax levy, percentage of increase, specific purpose of the taxes, and then, as I mentioned, public comment. So we look at the eighteen-nineteen budget. As I mentioned earlier, here are the different, different funds within that area. So if we look at our total budget overall, we have revenues of a hundred-and-eighty-nine-point-two million dollars, expenditures of two-hundred-and-three-point-six million dollars, fourteen-point-four million dollar spend down. As mentioned in, in the budget presentation, the majority of that spend down is in the area of the all facilities area, where we showed a, a nine-million-dollar spend down. If we look at just the general fund, and this is the similar to the general fund where we're talking about in the audit, so this is kind of doing a comparison similar to the audit, it's showing that the overall for general fund, which is transportation and general operations, operating capital, capital projects levy, showing a three-point-nine million dollar spend down in this area. So if we look at the sources, the sources of our revenue for the, the all funds is fifty-eight percent from the state, and that includes both formula revenue, special ed revenue, any other revenues. We have our property taxes, which is operating referendums, our capital projects levy, safe schools, community ed, our debt service, our federal, which includes our title, special ed, and then all others, which would be the fees, tuition, any rentals, and then food service, which includes both state, federal, and local. So people that pay for, for lunches themselves. If we just break that into the general fund, you look at, it's sixty-eight percent of is state aid, twenty-seven percent is property tax, and federal and tuition is five percent. So if we look at expenditures, similar to what was mentioned earlier, if you look at the overall, we're looking at thirty-seven percent. You kind of have to look at the, the three areas combined to get the true classroom, which is thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and then the seventeen. So you're looking at a fifty-five percent of our total overall budget. Your, kind of your other areas of instructional support, you can see there's the assistant principals, the media, staff development, your pupil support, or your nurses, transportation. And then you look at sites, which is our buildings and facilities, and then our bond payments, and then administration, which includes both district and site administration, and then district support, which is the accounting, payroll, technology, community relations, HR. If we look at it more from a, just a, a general fund perspective, you look at, you're talking more of sixty-nine, seventy percent of that budget is the classroom, and you kind of see the similar areas as with the overall budget.
Can I interrupt you just for a second on that, on that one? I'm just wondering, through the years, has this changed at all, or has it pretty much remained consistent, were the percentages of these?
I think overall, I would say that, as Matt mentioned with the audit, I think we've seen a growth in both the instructional and the special education.
Okay.
The, actually, the administration, district, the support services areas have probably seen a decline, or, I mean, you're looking at a smaller, smaller number. I mean, it's the total of the two of them are six percent, so there's been adjustment. If you looked at the dollar amounts, the dollar amount increases have not been as large as the other areas, which would make sense.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So if we go on to the proposed property tax levy, the process is that, as I mentioned earlier with the, more of a chart, is the district sends the information to the counties in September. The counties provide property tax statements. And then we have a truth and taxation hearing tonight. And then after, once the board approves, we give the information to the counties and the state, and they provide the final property tax statements. So our property taxes are broken out into five categories, referendum, referendum other, which is equity, community services, debt service, and then all other. And as was in the resolution, the board determines whether to levy a maximum amount or something less, and they can never levy more than what we did in the preliminary levy. They can only levy that amount in total. So if we look at the referendum, this is the voter-approved referendum, it's showing that between years, we show a seven-hundred-and-sixty-three-dollar increase in the base. That is due to both enrollment changes and also the inflationary increase within the, the question that was provided to voters. I believe the inflation was a little over a two percent. Prior year adjustments, you see here that we had a negative adjustment in prior years where, since we're planning this technically a year and a half ahead of time, enrollment numbers, inflationary numbers, all those type of things need to be adjusted over time. That's where you see these adjustments. And last year, we had a negative adjustment of a hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars. This year, it's a positive hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars. So the net effect of it is an additional one-point-one million dollars within the referendum levy. The equity levy, which is intended to reduce the disparity between, revenue between the highest and lowest revenue districts within a region. You see that really overall, the net of this is up a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. Slight increase in both the equity and the board portion of it, and again, that's enrollment-driven. Community services showing a hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-dollar increase. The majority of this increase was due to a resubmission of population within the city of Bloomington, which drives up some of the different levies within community services. Debt service, we actually see a drop in here, and here's kind of going back to when I went through the budget, is that we did not have the adjustments in pay eighteen for them taking back dollars, because we use those dollars to be able to pay interest on bonds upfront. We will have that on the pay nineteen going into the financial year twenty, and that's why you see a negative of two-twenty-nine. So the net effect is a four-hundred-thousand-dollar reduction in levy, which is nets out to the So if we look at our overall, referendum went up one-point-one million dollars or six percent. Looking at that again, it was the voter-approved and its adjustments to both revenue and, and inflationary factors. Referendum other, the equity went up a hundred-and-sixty-five, one-point-nine percent. Community services, seven-point-two percent. Debt service, down two-point-eight. And others, which is our capital projects levy and our all facilities, the main increase within there is that, since our capital projects levy is based on a market value, that increases over time within the market value. So what shows is overall, we went up two-point-four million dollars, or four-point-two percent. If you look at it kind of operating referendum, which is operating referendum and oper, referendum other, that went up four-point-seven percent. The non-referendum items went up three-point-eight percent. If you look at that, the majority of that, three-point-three percent of it was either the all facility or the capital projects levy. And the remaining parts of that were, a very small portion was the remainder of non-referendum items. We've worked with the city and county on a regular basis to be able to give a median-type price home, what the impact would be, so we can do a comparison between years and also compare ourselves to the city and county of what their, what the overall taxes are going up. We show a median-sized home this last year, they're projected to go up four-point-three percent, or ten thousand dollars. The county, city, and school taxes to go up on that median-sized home, ninety-two dollars, or two-point-nine percent. And the school taxes going up twenty-nine dollars, or two-point-nine percent. Some of the reason, if you look at it from the prior slide where we look at the four-point-two, but it's only going two-point-nine on the home, a couple of things there that I'll say is, it's because of the change in value of homes. And also with the operating referendum, that doesn't get spread over everything, there are some adjustments with it. So for us to have a higher increase in the operating referendum, which the voters did approve, it has a, a more significant of, effect on the property tax increase with school district, because it's a smaller pie that, or P, of smaller value of market value that it's spread over. So the next step is to look for board approval of the pay two thousand nineteen levy for the two thousand and nineteen-twenty school year.
Questions?
Publishing a paper, it talked to, you know, that lists all the counties and the school districts, amount of taxes. Bloomington was two-hundred-and-fifty-six-nine for the median valuation. Edina was five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand. Minneapolis was two-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-dollar median value. So of all Minneapolis, two-hundred-and-forty-eight, all of Bloomington, two-fifty-six, there's a distortion there somewhere in Edina, five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars.
Do you want to point to that?
There's not a distortion, just fact.
What it costs to live there, evidently.
Are you going to move to Edina, is what you're telling us?
Any other questions?
Minneapolis.
No.
So do you even have any questions? Okay, let's vote then. All in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars was the median home, Edina.
That's why I don't live there.
Was two-fifty-six.
All right. Next up, we have the World's Best Workforce Annual Report, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, and Rick Kaufman is going to be here. Thank you, Ron.
Madam Chair. Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board, I come to you tonight with the final, final proof of the annual report. As we recall, earlier tonight, you had the World's Best Workforce presentation by members of the administrative team that includes, pieces that are included in the annual report. We bring this to you as a final review before going to print tomorrow, assuming your approval of this special issue of the school pages.
We need to read the resolution here.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Yeah. Just, thank you.
It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Two Seventy-One accepts the World's Best Workforce Annual Report for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
Second?
Continue. Sorry for the interruption.
Can we just replay the tape?
Yeah.
I have no other comments, other than the, the material, most of this material, majority of this material is provided by Dr. Heistad, as well as the Learning and Teaching Department, and the Pathways Committee, which reviews the curriculum cycle information, information that's included in here.
Anyone have any questions? I'm assuming you all looked at it before the meeting anyway, so does anyone have any questions?
I like the, I like to see the superintendent smiling on the front of that there. I'm wondering how they caught you in such a jovial mood.
Who told the, who told the joke? Which one told the joke?
All right. Any questions? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Madam Chair. Does this, does this go out to everybody, anybody? Or is it just available online?
No, it'll be printed, we'll send it to the printer tomorrow, and it will be out in the mail to just every resident in Bloomington by next week.
That brings us to the School Board Community Engagement Plan. Madam Chair? Go ahead.
Resolve that the School Board of Independent School District Two Seventy-One adopts the updated School Board Community Engagement Plan.
Second. Okay, this is from the Community Engagement Committee, so we're just bringing it to you guys for, for approval. So I don't know if any of the other members of the Community Engagement Team have any comments they want to say or not.
Madam Chair, just, just to say that we did, we did work this over, massage it quite thoroughly, and, and at least when I left that meeting, we were, we were pleased with, with what was in writing here. So a lot of work has gone, gone, gone into this, and I appreciate the district through Mr. Kaufman and Les and Deb Bunkhold for coordinating all this information.
Questions?
I have a comment.
Uh huh.
I thought that this was really excellent and well-written and direct to give instruction to us as board members of ways that we can engage the community better. And it seems more intentional and directive and exciting, actually, to be a part of this board and to see some of this happen. So thank you for your work on the committee.
You've got some work involved in this, too, so.
There is one that we have not previously done, that's, that's coming up. Maureen, you want to?
Sure.
Talk about that a little bit.
On Saturday, March second, it'll be between nine and noon here in this building, we are going to host the first, what we hope to be an annual event, called the Bloomington Book Fest. It's going to encourage literacy in our young, young students, and there will be authors there, there will be activities, each of our elementary schools. The media department, Media Center has taken on an activity surrounding a certain book. And, you know, it'll just be a, a fun morning for kids to come. We hope to give each child a book when they leave. And there will also be opportunities for signing up for summer programs with the city, with the district. Just a fun morning. Yes, sir?
And that big event is pretty much sponsored by the Community Services, Community Education.
Community Ed, Education Foundation is a partner.
And with Tamara's group, and a variety of preschool and, and different rooms set up for different themes and everything else like that.
It's going to be here in this building.
But in this building.
And there'll be plenty of volunteer opportunities and...
Guaranteed to be fun.
Yes, there will be a chance for all board members to volunteer. Love it. Love it. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Thank you, Rick. All right. That brings us to board member reports. Anyone want to go first this evening?
I'll go first. I've got a couple of quick things. I was able to see the, the Jefferson production of the Lion Witch in the Wardrobe, and then later that evening... And then later that evening, I went and saw the Kennedy Holiday, Holiday Around the World performance. And this is really the first performance I've seen since we've updated our, our theaters there, and they're just amazing. Both of them were, the sound quality so good in there, the acoustics, the lighting, the stages are just, it's like first-class productions here. And it was a lot of fun seeing both of those productions. And so I would encourage our community to support our theater and music and check out our new theaters because they're, they're really, really nice. And that's all I got.
Anyone else? Oh, you want to go ahead? Go ahead.
I can kind of dovetail off of Tom. I also went to the matinee of the Kennedy Choir Around the World production. And it was actually very encouraging because my mom was there with a seniors group. And so I, I saw a lot of older people really enjoying it and making comments about the talent that was there. And I just think it's, it's such a benefit to our community to have a district that supports the arts and the talent of these young people and cultivates it. And I think it was just excellent. And then today, I had the opportunity to take a friend over to the College and Career Academy, to the cosmetology community over there, and she got her hair done and talked with the students as they came in. You know, heard some very exciting news. I don't know if you've heard this, but actually, for the first time in three years, the cosmetology program is maxed, and they have a waiting list.
Wow.
And so I think our goal of encouraging students to, you know, check out the Career and College Academy is really making a difference in that particular areas. And we'd like to see that continue in the other areas. Also, I met the bus drivers as they were waiting for the students and thanked them for, you know, what they do when gals worked for us for four years and others been there for a year. So just really thankful for their commitment to us. And also talking with other students to find out what they're doing and their enthusiasm and excitement. So that's one of the things that I've wanted to promote is the Career and College Academy. And so I'm hoping to get over there to connect with students more. But that was a great, great morning experience for me today.
Madam Chair, could I back up real quick on one thing? Beth jogged my memory talking about the talent at the Kennedy performance that one of our own, very own, Ally Starks, our student school representative, had a solo that was in Yiddish, and that was phenomenal. So the talent of our district exists right here at our board table.
Great. Thank you. All right.
Okay, so last week, Legislative Committee met to discuss our legislative platform, and we had already engaged in a conversation with our superintendent regarding the platform that we will be bringing to you for approval early January. Also, attended the Bloomington Advocacy Council. And what we have as a guest, a special guest, was the newly-elected State Representative, Steve Elkins. So we gave him a welcome, and the idea was for him to be able to introduce himself to the group and also for him to get to know who we are and what we do or what the group does, what the purpose of the group is. And also attended AMSD, trying to think between MSBA and AMSD, AMSD last Friday, and they gave a, kind of a quick report on election results, but then there was also a presentation regarding engagement with legislators and how, kind of recommendations of how school boards should engage with them. And then keep, just as a reminder, to keep our message when we bring our platform forward to them, to stay, to stay brief, consistent with the message that we have, that we look into other platforms as well so that there's many areas where we can match with other school districts or organizations. And repeat, you know, that it's never enough, to continuously come back to our legislators with the same kind of information. One strong recommendation that AMSD also had was if you happen to go to the Capitol for any reason, if you end up, or if we end up talking to legislators or speaking, what is it called? Gosh. Yeah. Anytime that we go, that we let AMSD know so that they know that we have been there talking, and they like to kind of keep track of which school districts have been talking to legislators and what kind of message they've been receiving. And also to kind of, they like to be informed just in case a legislator said, hey, I happened to talk to so-and-so from this school district. So they like to be a little bit informed about that. So just a reminder, in any case, we can pass that information if you let the Legislative Committee know or the district know, then we can inform AMSD.
Okay.
Madam Chair. So I thought I'd change my, my report just a little bit this evening since we are in sort of the season of giving. My wife and I were talking about how we might be able to give back to our communities, and I, and I, I just had, just had a conversation with Jennifer Hazel in purchasing about a Food for Thought program. So if I may, I'd like to read just a little bit about that program, just to help underscore what it is and what it does. Children's Food for Thought was originally started by a parent-volunteer lunch server at one of our elementary schools who noticed some children didn't have enough money for lunch. The Food for Thought is now a program within the Education Foundation of Bloomington. It provides funds for school lunches, students, when their families have a financial crisis, whether the family has a temporary financial setback, doesn't qualify for federal food assistance for your reduced benefits, or is in the process of applying for aid for children's food for, for thought. It's a program that can help. In some cases, a family may miss the income guidelines by a really small margin. District Food Service Supervisor will discreetly work with that, that family and/or their guardian to help come up with a way to replenish the student's meal account until the family's able to pay the meal. What you can do is, you can write a check, I believe it goes to ISD two-seventy-one, and then in the memo, you can say that you wanted to go for Food for Thought. And it goes to that particular fund to help pay off some balances, to help some families who, for whatever reason, can't make it through their food, food needs for their students. If you're, if you're, for whatever reason, you're not interested in that particular opportunity, if you're interested in donating, you can also donate to Veep, Bridging, Bloomington United for Youth, Cornerstone, and I'm sure all fifteen of our PTAs would be more than happy to take a donation. And then, of course, the Ed Foundation in Bloomington. Ed Foundation is running Food for Thought. Am I, am I right in that? But, you know, you can, you can donate to Ed Foundation also, and they do other great things. So these are just some opportunities. And as the chair mentioned, there are plenty of opportunities to, to donate and volunteer your time. So just get in touch with our PTAs and/or the front, front desk at each of our, of our building sites, and you can, you can volunteer to your heart's content. So that'll be it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have one more thing to add. Last time I was here, I talked about the snow pant shortage. And my church, Bethany Church, is doing a snow pant drive to collect one hundred pairs of snow pants. Within the first week, we have twenty-seven pairs. So it's moving forward. So if anybody else out there is wanting to donate toward that tangible need, we're collecting gently-used as well as, you know, anything new as, as well. So you can contact myself through the website or Julie Campanelli from the Wellness Committee. So, thank you.
Okay. I have just a few items on my list here. I had a chance to do classroom visit at Poplar Bridge Elementary, and actually had a wonderful time because I got to help out in kindergarten, so that, that was great. I also attended some of the professional development at Westwood. I was able to go to the Family Fun Night at Westwood and the Holiday Concert at Kennedy. I attended the PTA meeting at Kennedy where there was a really great speaker on anxiety and mental health that I thought parents thought, found really interesting and good information. The Special Education Community Advisor Council met, and they are working, there are going to be a conservative ship and guardianship trainings for parents that will be held at the Bloomington Transition Center this, later this year. Possibly some estate planning also with that. They're discussing, working, having a police liaison come in and talk to the parents about, and the parents talk to them about keeping our children with special needs safe in incidents where the police are called either at school or at home. So that's part of the plan they're working on. And they also are looking for a representative from, from the CECAC to join the Pathways Advisory Committee. I guess they need a new person there. I also attended the PTSA council meeting, and there, there was a, our Curriculum and Instruction Specialists did a really great presentation on innovative teaching strategies. I also wanted to mention that Dennis Kane received the Omar Bonnaroo Award from the Human Rights Commission. Many of us were there to recognize him. He's a very, a very important volunteer in the community, but very important that he was one of the tri-chairs of one of our referendums here. So he's been a strong advocate. He also serves on our Bloomington Advocacy, or Bloomington Public Schools Advocacy Council, so he's one of our great advocates. So congratulations to Dennis. And last, I think this is my very last meeting as chair, so I just want to thank all of my fellow school board members, Superintendent Fujitaki, cabinet back there, and Deb. You guys have all been a great team to work with, and thank you for a great year. Your turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You might get reelected. Yeah. Turn of the term.
We're in a break for students and teachers start, starts on December twenty-fourth through January fourth, with school resuming on Monday, January seventh. On behalf of the School Board and Administration, we wish everyone a happy and safe winter break. Administration now needs a motion to establish a study session of the School Board on Monday, January seventh at six p.m. to prepare for the upcoming organizational meeting of the board. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you. Administration also needs a motion to establish a professional development session of the School Board on January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, at five-thirty p.m. in room six-zero-one. The topic is an educational briefing.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
That concludes my part. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business that needs to come before the board? Maybe it is adjourned.
Done for the year.